Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Good evening.
I need a motion to come back into... or come out of close session.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And then you need a motion to close the council meeting.
Need a motion to close the council meeting, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
This is the roll call for the regular meeting. Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Yeah.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6, that sec. Notice of which was sent to the record on the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
Fudge leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the minutes for the council and the regular...
No, actually, you have a proclamation.
Oh, yes, I do have a proclamation. I have a proclamation this evening. It speaks about small businesses and advocacy groups. And it reads, "Whereas the city of Hackensack supports our local businesses and advocacy groups, which endorse the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas Small Business Saturday was created in 2010 to strengthen local business, facilitate job growth, boost the economy, and preserve neighborhoods nationwide. And whereas in 2016, consumers aware of Small Business Saturday spent a total of $15.4 billion, with independent merchants, more than 485 organizations joined, and more than 112 million consumers shocked. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 25, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across this country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year." It's very important, you know, we have a downtown and there's many town, you know, all our local municipalities around us, many of them have downtowns or small business areas, and it's very important that these areas are maintained and supported by the citizens and their communities that they're in. And I always try to make a point if I, you know, try to keep stuff in town a lot of times, and when it's going to dinner or if I need to go shopping for something. So, we'd appreciate if you'd support our local merchants. And with that, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the council and the regular session of October 10, 2017.
Everybody was present.
Everybody was present. So, need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. And with that, we'll go right to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Invite a guest. This is the city manager's report from November 21, 2017. The two-way conversion of Main Street and State Street is almost to a close. I'm sure there are multiple issues that we're trying to resolve, basically close out and prepare for next year's Main Street conversion. The leaf bag reminder is that all leaves should be placed in brown recyclable bags. I remind everybody, this is optional, but as weather proceeds and gets colder, obviously having these in bags make it easier for us to clean up and they don't blow all over the place. With some of the wind we've had, it might have been prudent to put them in bags. However, each resident can pick up one free bundle of bags of 15 at the DPW at 120 East Broadway, second floor, and that started October 1. The H-Pak grand opening took place on Saturday, November 11. An additional show was added for November 12. It was much success. I was there for the opening, plus the full mayor and council. It was well attended. It came off completely without a hitch. The attendance on Sunday's show wasn't a complete sellout, but at least 175 people were there. I am encouraged by the experience, and I think that residents should take the time to go down to the next event at the H-Pak and get a chance to see what the city has provided and the efforts of our cultural arts department. And I think that residents of the city should be proud of the event, which obviously mirrors the H-Pak with the Atlantic Street Park. Our recreational department has now moved from 239 Broadway while our building located at Holt Street is under construction. The chain link fence and the security fence went around the building today. It was supposed to be yesterday, but it was delayed, so it's now a construction site. So, it's under the hands of the retained contractor, which is Two Brothers Construction, and it'll take 356 days by contract to construct. So, fortunately, this time next year, we will be done, and we will have a building and a facility that we're all going to be proud of. Comments on the goal-setting meeting that we had on October 28? The city manager will take the input that was received soon as some of my staff returns, and I have some additional staff for the time to do this. We'll put together, there'll be a list, it'll be submitted to the mayor and council, it'll be made public. Myself and the chief financial officer, Jim Maggon, will review it, and obviously, with approval, we'll identify our 10 major goals and hopefully have the ability to fund same and to move forward. The Atlantic Street Park won the New Jersey Americans Planning Association Great Public Space Award. I wasn't here prior to what that used to be, a parking lot, but as the mayor stated at the grand opening of the cultural arts building, you know, the parking lot song, we reversed it. We took a parking lot and made it into a park instead of, you know, a park into a parking lot. So, I think it's a beautiful facility, and I think that it's one of the key locations for the city in the redevelopment and certainly for the economic development of this city. The DDEF grant award is $37,150.88, which is awarded by the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for Drunk Driving Enforcement Fund. This obviously covers for the overtime and the enforcement for police officers to obviously remove people that are inebriated off the road. Especially in these holiday times, there's always tragedy where unfortunately, some of these people slip through the cracks or certainly law enforcement, but we certainly hope that this will help us keep our residents and the motoring public safe. Tobacco 21. Our health department will participate in the educating of our tobacco retailers and enforcement of the new laws. Signage and materials will be distributed as well. Obviously, the age of, the ability to purchase tobacco products is now 21 years of age. Christmas tree lighting will be December 4, beginning at 5:30 at the Green. There will be the Victorian carolers, the high school chorus, refreshments, and special guest Santa Claus will be there. He's confirmed. The holiday bus trip for the Hackensack senior citizens to go to the Playhouse Christmas Original Song and Dance Festival at the Hunterdon Hills Playhouse in Hampton, New Jersey. Let's see here. Trips include bus ride and a full meal with dessert. Well, think about that. Tickets are $20 each and go on sale Wednesday, November 22 at 39 Broadway, and they are first come, first served. One ticket per person, must show ID, and hopefully that will be a good event for our seniors. And my last is to wish everybody a healthy and happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully a safe one. And this ends the city manager's report. Oh, for the record, the city will be closed on Thanksgiving and the day after. Thank you.
Could you just explain the, there were tickets for $20 apiece, and when they're first come, first served, you mean that when they're sold out, that's it?
Right.
So whoever gets them first?
I mean, there were 40 tickets. I think there was 40 or 42.
Okay. So the first 42 people get the tickets, correct?
Yes.
All right, good. All right, that's it?
Yes, sir.
All right, new business. Resolution 396-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 35-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 88 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Fire Prevention with respect to application fees for certain permits. Need a motion?
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 35-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 5, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 397-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 36-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to restrict parking on certain residential streets except for resident parking permit holders.
May a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 36-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 5, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at all, at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 398-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 37-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to add a new handicapped parking space in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicapped.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 37-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 5, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 399-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 38-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Employment to eliminate payments for accumulated unused sick leave upon retirement for all new hires.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 38-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 5, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 400-17.
This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation, NJSA 48:4-87, Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Municipal Program, $35,571 for Fashini Park Playground Improvements Grant.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 401-17.
A resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation per NJSA 48: 4-87 for the 2017 potty armor grant.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 402-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the transfer of the 2017 budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 403-17.
This is a resolution authorizing change order number one for JC contracting for the Main Street Streep skate project. This was actually a decrease of $9,663.12.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 404-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of contract for grants management consultant to Millennium Strategies LLC.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 406-17.
405.
405-17, sorry.
Resolution authorizing tax collector to fixed rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes, assessments, and other charges.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 406-17.
Resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel small balances less than $10 in accordance with NJSA 48:5-17-1.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 407-17.
A resolution authorizing municipal tax collector to conduct an accelerated tax lien sale during the calendar year of 2017.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 408-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments, disabled deduction, and skateboard judgments.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 409-17.
Resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney Matthew J. O'Donnell to settle the cases on the attached list dated November 21, 2017, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 410-17.
A resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney Raza Legal Group LLC to settle the cases on the attached list dated November 15, 2017, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 411-17.
A resolution concurring with the planning board's investigation and designating Block 208, Lot 22, otherwise known as 20-28 Sussex Street, as an area in need of redevelopment.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 412-17.
A resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, we're gonna go into the consent agenda. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest? Need anything pulled? I do have one question on the first one, 413-17, or some comments made. Are we leaving it on, are we gonna vote on it, or are we gonna get some information on it? This is speed limits on...
I would encourage the council to approve this, and we'll add to the next piece of this.
On the speed limits? Okay.
Nobody's pulling anything?
Nobody else needs anything pulled?
Nope.
Say anything for me? Yep. Okay, need a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands?
Um, I gotta read it first.
Okay, yes.
I know you were trying to get me not to read, because you like listening to me.
Yeah, I know, your voice is... Don't want you reading anymore than you have to.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 413-17 through 419-17. 413-17 is a resolution in support of establishing speed limits by the New Jersey Department of Transportation along Powell Fly Road and South Summit Avenue and signage for same. Resolution 414-17 is a resolution authorizing the mayor and council committee, the mayor, authorizing the mayor and council committee of the whole and regular 2018 meeting schedule to include a change in committee of the whole meeting starting time to 6:00 PM. Resolution 415-17 is a resolution authorizing extension of Jacqueline Stout's family leave of absence for an additional three weeks with return to work on December 11, 2017. Resolution 416-17 is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence for Susan M. Swerzowski. I apologize for that. She's a keyboarding clerk one in the municipal court, commencing on November 1, 2017, and ending on January 23, 2018. Resolution 417-17 is a resolution authorizing reappointment of special officers Class 1 for the 2018 calendar year. Resolution 418-17 is a resolution authorizing submission of a fiscal year 2018 Bergen County Community Development Block grant application for resurfacing of various streets. And Resolution 419-17 is a resolution authorizing raffle license for the Boys and Girls Club of Patterson and Fasek, and we need a motion.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay. This time I'm gonna ask for a five-minute recess before we go over to the public, if possible. Could I just see the city? [inaudible] Okay, I need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. This time, anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Brownie the Sissy Sharif, Second Street in Hackensack. Good evening, everyone. I haven't been here in a while. I'm so glad I could get out tonight. The kids are still up, but I'm leaving right after this. I do have a couple of community concerns. Hold on a second. I have a couple of community concerns. I wanna know if we can put something in place at Carver Park. During the summer was a disaster there. You know, we have no smoking signs in the park, but if you're right on the outside of the park, right on the grass or the sidewalk part, the people's...
What is the park?
Huh? By the entrances, yeah. They can smoke, of course, on the outside, but I would like to see something put in place, no idle smoking, no standing there by the door, by the gate, smoking. It deters people from coming in, the children, the parents. It's just really a disgrace in the summer. Also, I wanna mention Miss T's on First Street. Miss T's is a breeding ground for disaster. I made, I mentioned this yesterday, and there's been a couple of altercations yesterday, today. I spoke to Mr. Mohammed today in the store, and he was saying how the kids come in, they wanna stay warm, but then they get to playing around, they throwing his bagels and things around. So, I think something needs to be put in place, I'm not sure, maybe a friendly, yeah, by the bus stop, maybe a friendly walk-through by the officer sometime. Nothing really harassing for the kids, 'cause then they get defensive and a whole bunch of other stuff starts. I wanna say, speak a little bit about the Rexon SBN build. I know it is not ideally what the community has wanted for years. Mr. Aronberg, I don't, I don't know if you've heard a lot of this, but the community is not really in favor of that. But what I am in favor of is that this building may house a lot more children that may not be captured by these gangs and different people that are taking our children and hurting them and killing them, and the parents finding their bones in the woods. So, it's good in one way. I'm talking about the gangs, that you always hear gangs, the children are being taken in different states, the gangs are taking them, and these kids have nothing else to do, they look for these gang members as father figures. So, it's good in one way. Of course, like Kathleen and everybody else, concerned about the parking and the quality of life in the community. I'm hoping that everything can be worked out, because it's a good thing, but then there's a lot of other things that need to be worked out. The November Fest was a wonderful luncheon for the seniors. I was very happy to see Nana Mae, your mom, Kathleen, always, always. And I've been wanting to say this since June to get here to say this. I know there's a lot of things going on with our police department, but one thing I must say, in June, when my mom passed away at 95, the police showed my family such dignity, pride, and respect. Our entourage going to the cemetery in Paramus must have been miles long, and we held up a lot of traffic going through Hackensack, Maywood, Rochelle Park, and Paramus with our horse and buggy. So, I wanted to just thank the Hackensack Police Department for their support and respect for that. And also, I had an aunt that passed away the next week, and the respect that they gave our family again to the Hackensack Cemetery. The husband was a previous detective in the city of Hackensack.
All right, Sissy, your three minutes is up, though. I appreciate all your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope to take everything to heart.
Thank you for the kind words for our police department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and City Manager. My name is Felicia Benson-Craft. I'm from Maywood, New Jersey. I am the co-owner and co-artistic director of the Hackensack Theater Company, along with my partner, Cusine Gates. We've been working on a 39 Broadway for about 14 years, usually producing three shows a season. Every April, all the theater companies meet with Greg Leosi and his staff to pick our show dates and go over changes with the facility. And this year was no different, except we were meeting about our first season in the new facility on State Street. Our level of excitement for working out of the new theater was only equaled by our thoughts of what was possible. In this theater, the new equipment and the heightened ceiling showed us that we could do shows that were not possible at 39 Broadway. We were informed in the April meeting that Greg and the city needed titles no later than the end of September. Case and I worked really hard over the next six months, going back and forth over which shows, budgets, how much money we had up front, how much we could raise, and we chose Avenue Q as one of our main shows. We gave Greg all the information requested on time at the end of September. We were then called into a meeting with all the other theater companies in October, and at that meeting, we were told that there would be now a fee structure. Once I saw the breakdown of the fees, my heart kinda dropped a bit, because... Once I saw the breakdown of the fees, my heart kinda dropped a bit, because, you know, we work show to show, and we have limited budgets. And Case and I both started questioning whether we could do the shows that we had committed to. The fees imposed on us just for Avenue Q are gonna raise my budget $1,600. And it may not seem like a lot of money to some folks, but $1,600 to a not-for-profit community theater is huge. It's another show. And that's just the fee for Avenue Q, not any of our other shows. I'm not opposed to fees, please don't get me wrong. In fact, I think there should have been a fee scale for years in the other location. We're grateful for the opportunity that we had in that space and that we could call it home, but now we're worried we're gonna be homeless, and we're gonna have to find another location to do our shows. I propose two solutions. Either we start a fee schedule in the 2019 season, so we can get used to it and figure out our budgets, or at least for this year, we get a reduced, more manageable amount for each show. If we know in April, when we're picking our dates and titles, that a show would have a fee up and above the percentage we give the city, we can plan accordingly. We may do a show with a cheaper set or simpler costumes, you know, but to plan more fundraisers, to supplement it, something, but right now, we're kind of in a pickle over the new fees for this year. We've been promoting this new space since they broke ground, because we've been so excited about being in it. And on a personal note, Case and I have been speaking about this space for years, before they even broke ground. So, please let us at least stay in there this first year until we figure out how to move forward in a way that benefits everyone, the council and the city. And I hope that this meeting opens up the communication, so that we can all work towards a solution to it. Thank you so much for listening, and happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi, Cassine Gaines. DeWolff plays Hackensack, and today, speaking as co-founder with Felicia of Hackensack Theater Company, a nonprofit arts organization that's had its home at the Hackensack Cultural Arts Center since 2004. I am happy to see the opening of Hack Pack and think everyone who has had a hand in the acquisition and opening of the facility deserves a round of applause. We've all been waiting for it for a long time. There's something very important that we all agree on. We all want this building to succeed and help bring people downtown. For that to happen, the public needs to be informed about what exciting new programming people are bringing into that space. I was disappointed that there were several missed opportunities to do that in the past two weeks. In Jim Beckerman's feature article in The Record, the recent municipal newsletter that went out, and the opening weekend events, there was no mention of any programming beyond the Pack the House series. It doesn't do anyone any good for the public to think there will only be programming in that space for six days out of the year. I hope this was an oversight that will be corrected moving forward. I just wanna use the rest of my time to speak about some of the exciting programming that Hackensack Theater Company will be hosting this year. On January 9, we'll be staging Hamilton's, and I have some flyers for the city manager and the council, an officially licensed sing-along of the Hamilton soundtrack. Tony Jackson, resident teacher and Microsoft Television commercial star, will be onstage with us for that. We're really excited for this, and as a testament to the excitement that the others have for this, we've already sold 126 tickets, even though the show is over a month and a half away. And just to break that down, that's 126 people who have committed to being in the heart of our downtown area on a Tuesday night, several weeks, months in advance. Additionally, the event is only being produced for a few hundred dollars, meaning that the city has already seen a significant return on its investment in our show. It's a win for everybody, but imagine how many more tickets we could have sold by this date if it had been mentioned publicly even just once. Please let this serve as an example, that the city doesn't need to spend many thousands of dollars for a one-night event to bring people downtown. You just need programming that is affordably priced, that people are interested in. Additionally, in June, we're having a performance headlined by Shanice Williams, who starred as Dorothy in NBC's The Wiz Live, and Kimberly Marable, a Broadway actress who was seen in The Book of Mormon, Sister Act, and more. She's currently in Disney's The Lion King on Broadway. It's particularly nice to have Kimberly back with us, since her very first production ever was with Hackensack Theater Company right at 39 Broadway in 2006 in our production of Dreamgirls. It's been great seeing her journey from our Broadway to New York's Broadway, and it's a great reminder of just some of the real success stories that have come from the theater produced in town by some of our local talent. We're happy to have been a part of the Cultural Arts Center story and hope to be a large part of Hack Packs. I encourage the council and all residents of Hackensack to come and see our programming as well as everyone else's. We make every effort to keep our ticket prices affordable, and we promise that you will be entertained. We ask for your support to bring people into this space and downtown. Thank you, and have a nice Thanksgiving.
Cassine, what was... Hamilton's was January 9?
January 9th. It's a Tuesday.
Okay.
And tickets are going quickly.
Seven?
It's at seven, I believe.
Actually, I saw it. It was online. I did see it online.
Yeah, it's up on the website.
It's up on the Hack Pack website.
How much are the tickets?
It's $10.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Dascoli, and I'm the current president of TNT Theater Group. TNT has been performing in the Cultural Arts Center for over 10 years. Approximately four weeks ago, the groups that had already signed agreements for the upcoming season were summoned to an emergency meeting concerning 102 State Street. At the meeting, we were told that there would be a new fee system being implemented, a system that was in complete contradiction to the agreements we signed back in April. Not only are these fees astronomical, but after six months of planning our seasons, securing our rights, this is a setup to fail. Now, before any arguments be made about the expense of a new space, I cannot understand why $50,000 of taxpayer money was given to the Main Street Alliance to fund their Pack the House series, some of which they used to fund their opening night party. This is not including the $10,000 rider for these imported acts. I'm also confused, because not one member of the Main Street Alliance has ever seen any... Has any theater background or training, yet they've been given this grant by the city, and in contrast, we, the not-for-profit groups, are being charged an average of $2,000 to perform our shows. Our groups are an integral part of the community. We spend money at The Home Depot buying materials for our sets. We spend money in the local shops buying costume and prop pieces. We spend money buying food in the local bodegas before and during rehearsal. And we would spend even more money in the local area, but with one bar in the immediate area that stopped selling food after 10:00 P.M. before our shows let out, and well over 90% of the food venues closing early as well, we, as well as our patrons, find ourselves bringing our business elsewhere. Yet, the Main Street Alliance was given $50,000 of taxpayer money with no evidence of prospering the community. Incidentally, it was my group that held our murder mystery fundraiser at The Crowsnest, bringing business to a restaurant at a very slow time of the year. It was my group that caters in a lunch from the ShopRite for our Tech Week rehearsal. And it was my group that approached the local restaurants to create a pre-show dine-around during the production of Jesus Christ Superstar, which no member of the Main Street Alliance came to support. I find it very sad that after years of benefiting and embracing this community, local groups are being forced out for no valid reason. I do implore you to rethink your fee structure and create a maintainable agreement, so that we can continue to see the city and the new PAC grow. Thank you.
Want to comment on that now, or you want...
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, professional staff, and fellow citizens, good evening. My name is James McGuire. I'm presently employed as a service manager for Harley-Davidson in New Rochelle. If you're over 50, you instantly saw Dick Van Dyke. If you're under 50, you're not gonna listen to what I'm saying, 'cause you're now Googling who he is. However, I've done much more in my life. I've been a steward on a cruise ship. I've been a flower shop owner, a high school gym teacher, and a college football coach. I've been a gardener, a theater manager, a judge, and a minister. I've been a neighborhood activist, and like any other civic-minded individual assembled here today, I've served jury duty. I've even been retired, twice. I've been the Beatle of the workhouse, and more than that, I've been a pirate, a cat named Busterford, a pimp, an ogre, and a king. I was the department store Santa that got Macy's and Gimbel's to shake hands. You may ask yourself, how is it possible that I've done all this? The answer's simple. I've performed on Broadway. 39 Broadway, to be exact. I've done this not only with pay, but a significant cost to myself for commuting. I do this because I believe in something that it would seem this council might not, supporting the arts. For me, this is something I do for enjoyment. But lest you judge the quality of local productions, let me tell you that actors I have shared the stage with have gone on to Broadway and national touring roles. I've performed with somebody who is now a soloist at the Met. I've danced onstage with the great-granddaughter of the great Arturo Toscanini. And one of my fellow actors is even currently a member of Cirque du Soleil. The Hackensack Performing Arts Center has been a shining jewel of Hackensack cultural arts since 2001, enabling performers an outlet and providing citizens of this area with quality entertainment. Now, the longer-awaited upgrade has arrived, and it's been taken out of reach for many local production companies. When you created the current fee structure, how many of the groups that use your facility did you consult with? Can you tell me that you have a good grasp of the financial challenges to mount a musical production solely from ticket sales and the occasional donation? I know many people that were looking forward to the opening of that new facility, only now to find that it's been walled off by elitism and seeming greed. The new center was formerly a Masonic temple. It's ironic that a building dedicated to the seekers of light now becomes a place of darkness. Since 2001, Hackensack has been a leader in cultural arts. Your website proudly announces that historically, you've been the vanguard of cultural arts in Bergen County, and I would agree. Please, keep the arts alive in Hackensack for both aspiring performers and the public that attend our shows. I strongly urge you to rethink your current pricing and occupancy strategy. There is plenty of room, professional performance, and local amateurs, and I can assure you that despite the monikers, the entertainment values are the same. I was in the audience for a production of Spamalot by TNT that was better than New York City Broadway show for a fraction of the budget. This city takes the credit for nurturing the likes of Phelanius Monk, Jimi Hendrix, J. Lynn Turner, or J.T. Taylor. These people didn't start as superstars, they built their careers one before the time.
Sir, please finish up, your three minutes are up, and we have a line of people.
I beg of you, please don't stifle the next generation of superstars. Make the cultural arts accessible to all.
Thank you.
Hello.
Did you give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Hmm?
Could you give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Sonnier. I live at 6 Ferndale Court in Lowdy.
Thank you.
I am known as Jackie to my friends. I am a Jackie of all trades to the Teaneck Community Theater. I'm a master of few and dabbling of many. I bring many friends and bring all 15 of my aunts and uncles from my mom's side of the family to every single performance that we bring. Many, 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 many hours of entertainment to this community. I'm not a public speaker, and I'm very nervous. Don't be nervous.
Don't be nervous.
From NewJersey.com, I have an article that says Hackensack Hopes to Anchor Downtown with Arts Center. And on page three, it says the Hackensack Performing Arts Center will cater more towards community arts groups with some professional performances. Some professional performances. I'm fine, Lisa. Cater to local performing arts groups. We were hoping for a new home. We were promised a new home. We are not feeling that homey feeling that we had at 39 Broadway. I could... I feel safe walking out of my own house to my car, like I do walking out of my own house at 39 Broadway to the mic... To the car right there at the... I feel safe walking out from the church and the theater at the... To the parking lot at 39 Broadway. I do not feel safe walking through this town at night. The one night that I did walk at H-Pac. Let's just say that several of our fellow people were... Several of our theater members were brought about with a...
Jackie is our props person and our backstage person, so she's not used to getting up and speaking. This was a very brave thing for her to do, and it's because of her commitment to the arts and to our group. So, just give your last sentence, sweetie. Whatever dollars you put into the arts, you get back tenfold.
Tenfold. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, other distinguished members of the council. Good evening, City Manager. Although I reside at 915 Tulip Tree Court in Mava, New Jersey, my interest at this time is to introduce myself as a new business owner in Hackensack, New Jersey. I just recently opened a farmer's... An independently-owned farmer's insurance agency located at 433 Essex Street in Hackensack, two blocks northwest of the Medical Center. I am an individual with 24 years of experience in insurance in various capacities, as an independent agent, exclusive agents with State Farm, with Allstate. I've also been since as an insurance consultant and a loss control representative. So, in terms of experience with insurance, it runs the gamut. I just wanted to let folks know that as of November 1st, we actually officially opened our doors, although it didn't come with any fanfare at this point in time. We are reserving a grand opening in which all members of council and business leaders and the public, of course, will be invited, probably, you know, more or less when the weather breaks next year. In terms of what it is that we offer, we offer all realms of insurance, of course, auto, homeowners, business insurance, life insurance. I am securities licensed as well, so I offer a very...
Give me one second. Stop. Guys, please, give this man some respect from the audience, please.
So, I offer all realms of insurance, including mutual funds, variable products as well to help with retirement planning, savings, college savings, and things of that nature. In terms of what we are all about in New Jersey at this point, Farmers just recently... We're in the midst of an eastward expansion. It's a west coast company, started in California in 1928, but we're trying to be very aggressive and grow our market share here in the east coast, specifically in New Jersey. So, we're being very aggressive with rates. So, I encourage everybody to come visit me at 433 Essex Street on the lower level, Suite 2. We offer great affinity discounts, especially for some professions. One is namely our teachers. Farmers loves our teachers and our educators. We actually have a program where we provide a grant of upwards of two, between $2,500 and $100,000 for a teacher to provide us with a proposal online, a quick proposal online, basically letting us know that if they won the money, what would they do with the money for their schools and their community? So, it's something that we'll be opening up, I think, around January 10th, and I'll be sending out literature in various forms of publications to advise, you know, the educators that they can participate, including visiting the schools. In addition to our teachers, we have great affinity discounts for architects, pilots, CPAs, financial planners, various levels of educators, including college professors, dentists, engineers, and we, of course, we love our law enforcement, firefighters, lawyers, judges, librarians, surgeons, registered nurses, of course, scientists, active military, of course, is on our discount list, as well as retirees of these professions as well. So, basically, in a nutshell, I'm here in order to serve the community. I'm glad I'm here as part of this revitalization that's going on, and hopefully I can, you know, make a difference in the community. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Hackensack.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm certainly not a public speaker, and I certainly can't match the... My people who spoke before, but I just wanna give you a little background of me and who I am. I'm originally Turkish. I lived in London, England, and I came to L.A. and moved to Chicago and came to Hackensack in 1994. I had polio when I was two years old, and unfortunately, I had my own business in the Empire State Building. And unfortunately, I was in the city on 9/11, and I was pushing my wheelchair... I had polio when I was two years old, and unfortunately, I had my own business in the Empire State Building. And unfortunately, I was in the city on 9/11, and I was pushing my wheelchair. And as a result of that, I got dust on my hands, and I suffered from nasal pharyngeal cancer, which has really given me a bad hit. And one of the things that I certainly, I'm saying this in reference to my request to having parking, one of the things that liberates me into society as a disabled person is to have a wheelchair van. And for me to obtain a wheelchair van, it's not like just going to a normal secondhand store. I have a 2007 wheelchair van that cost me $22,000 because of all the adoptions. Not only do I have to suffer that, I also have to suffer ridiculous screening and various five, various assessments and everything, which is another $5,000. So for me to get into society, I have to pay a very heavy price. And I pay that price so that I can enjoy life. And when I say enjoy life, I mean be able to go anywhere where there's parking under the Americans with Disability Act. And I can say with my clear conscience and my heart that Hackensack Police, especially Sergeant O'Connor and the Traffic Division, have done the most incredible job locally. And what I do, and I don't know if people have watched the Hackensack Police Facebook page, they, in October, they actually showed how many disabled badges they had accumulated that were out of date. And they received like 170 likes, and there were so many comments from the community of what a wonderful job they did and the wordage they used. I use that as a role model for everywhere else I go. In fact, I have a folder that I call up the local police station if I see a violation. And if the officer comes out, I just hand them the folder, and they actually do take it seriously. And in particular, I really can't thank Hackensack Police enough for keeping to the letter of the law under Title 39, subsection four, section 138O, where it takes away one fundamental factor in enforcement. It says it shall be enforced. Now, under Title 39, the general understanding in the police community is its discretion. And I've always maintained and argued, and hopefully I've won the cases, that it can't be discretion because it's my liberty to go out and enjoy. You know, I don't want to hit on a raw point, and I'll close very quickly. You know, if you go out and you want to use a restroom, I can't have a police officer say to me, "I'm not going to issue a ticket." That's why for disabled people, you've really got to congratulate, if that's the right word, and please help pass a change in the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, we're going to look into that. Absolutely, we'll do it. First name was Ed, correct? Was it Ed or Al?
Eddie, sorry, Eddie Gomich, 130 Overlook Avenue, apartment 4J.
Ted's got it. Ted's got it. Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Randy Glover. I'm representing Tahrak Community Development Corporation tonight, which I'm the co-chair. Basically, I want to co-sign everything my colleagues said as far as the Hack Pack. So that being said, I'm just going to get to the programming that I'll be doing as they are. On February 13th, we are doing a Latin meets jazz at Hack Pack. February 14th, we are doing a Valentine's Day tribute to Motown, so that's actually Valentine's Day. On March 9th, we are doing the Stylistics with Elijah Bland opening, who's a resident of the city. On March 10th, we are doing Blue Magic Del Phoenix Review, and this group True Soul, who opens up for Blue, for Brian McKnight. And then we're also doing a film festival. And one of the films that's going to be screened is by Rev. Milton Jones, who is a city resident, who will be screening his film, which is about hip-hop in the 80s in Hackensack, Teaneck, and the Passaic area. So once again, just go to hackpack.org to find those things. If you like classic soul, if you watch Channel 13 and you look at My Music, these are the same exact groups that will be at Hack Pack. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Evening, Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive. I want to congratulate the council for pushing for Hack Pack and for pushing for the area behind it, the amphitheater. I attended every performance outdoors this summer. They were terrific. I was at the opening night of our new Performing Arts Center, and as I sat there, I thought to myself, "Am I really in Hackensack?" It's a phenomenal facility. The issue of fees will all be worked out. I'm sure we'll reach a compromise such that the local groups will be able to appear there at a reasonable price because it's really necessary that the local groups be given a venue where they can perform in a quality production. And I think that's just a matter of negotiation. I would like to suggest, if possible, that Al Dib's email list, which at the moment, I believe, is only used for emergency circumstances, but that be allowed to be accessed by Greg Liosi and Frank Barelli to further advertise events that are going on at the new Performing Arts Center. Not that many people read the newspaper today. A lot of people really don't know how to maneuver on the internet and get to a website, particularly many of our senior citizens. But if everyone was to get emails about what goes on there, I think it would greatly increase the potential audience. It's a fabulous facility. It's really something beyond what my perception of what it was going to be. It's very rare that the actuality of something is greater than the plans and the initial propaganda. But this facility is, notwithstanding the letter "I."
Like a secret joke.
It's the Hawaiian Hackensack.
Hawaiian Hackensack.
Anyway, you are all to be congratulated on both the outdoor facility, indoor facility. I know there was a lot of controversy about it, you took a lot of flak for putting the money into it, but your vision was absolutely 2020, and it is a phenomenal addition to this town. And I look forward to many more events there.
Thank you.
Rich Serbo, 46 Spring Valley Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council, how are you?
Good, you?
Mr. City Manager, and let's welcome the public who have been, you know, swept out of everything. We have limited amount of time, this is the one meeting of this whole month. So we are in a process of censoring the public. So let me get my say in. All this we're talking about with, it's called the Hack Pack, okay? So should I just go along and use that also? The Hack Pack, what's going on there? Who's in charge? Who's calling the shots? Why is the Main Street Business Council have so much to say there? What the heck is going on? And when the place loses money, which it will, who's going to pay that? Are city taxpayers going to pay the loss at that theater? Please, could you answer that? Will you answer that later, John? Will you? Okay, because it's, it's gonna lose a lot of money there because it's in disarray, and you're gonna bill taxpayers, okay? That's what you're gonna do, okay?
You have one show and it's in disarray. Go ahead.
No, no, look, it's already, who the heck is in charge there? I mean, you know...
Wait, though you were, Rich.
I should be, okay? But, you know, you're, you're not, I guess that enlightened John. But, okay, so please, clear up what's going on there, okay? It's a, it's a, it's a great facility, but let's, let's get something straight. We need a leader, we need a, someone that's, someone that's gonna, you know, even out what's happening there, please, okay? Also, let's, let's talk about camp, let's change the subject. It's all been about the Cultural Center tonight. But let's, let's talk about campaign donations to your campaign. Now, we have the city attorney here, so we can ask him, is it all legal that people doing business with the city can, can contribute to the, to the mayor's campaign? If it, if it is legal, it's, I would like to hear from Mr. Kleiman about that. If it is, the appearance of it seems kind of, you know, out of sorts, John. I mean, if you're taking money from people that are doing business with the city, I mean, what's that all about? And what about, what about employees, city employees, that are also giving to your campaign? Is, I mean, the appearance of it just doesn't seem right. And I, I hope Mr. Kleiman will comment on the legality of the whole thing, okay? Please, would you? Okay, let's, will you, are you gonna, we're gonna get you later, or?
Of course, absolutely, well.
As, as I said before, I answer questions at the direction of the mayor and the council and the city manager.
You may absolutely answer that question.
Okay.
Your time is up anyway, Mr.
My time's up already?
Yes.
Would you like me? You shorten the clock when I get up here.
Would you like, would you like me to respond?
Look, I know you are.
I told her two minutes and 38 seconds.
Yeah, I bet you did.
I don't start to let you know your address.
You don't want to hear things you don't want to hear.
You please...
City, city, city employees have the legal right to make campaign contributions to people that they support, just like the rest of us.
Okay.
And generally speaking, the city's professional service contracts are done through what is known as a fair and open process. And so there is no restriction on campaign contributions being received by those people so long as that process is followed. It's extremely common, it's extremely proper, and there is no legal issue whatsoever with it.
The, the proper part, maybe you should sort of, you know...
I'm ideal in legality.
Okay, so the appearance of it is just, just seems wrong.
Your time, your time is up. We're not going to go back and forth.
My time is up. Come on.
Next, please.
No, really, it was...
Be truthful.
I'm always truthful, Mr. Sir.
Good evening, Paul Nicholas. First thing I was, when the nice gentleman was speaking, it reminded me, I was, I was blessed to be in a freeholders' meeting recently with my friend, and I think you guys met him, Ryan Roy of Actus For All. So I'm wondering, you know, someone called me about it. I don't know if I could do it, but I would be willing to get started with it because it would be a disservice kind of like to all the other things I'm involved with, and I would want to not have full focus. But I think that's a really good program, and Hip is right here in town, too, on Main Street, heightened in progress. But what I was going to talk about, just some light things, sorry, missed the Hack Pack thing, I was just really busy. As you know, Project Homeless Connect, but Don't Let the Thing Fool You, in January, I'll hand this to you. Anybody in the community that you know can go there. Also, the county, as per the state new law, A815, and I know years ago you backed me up on this about police dropping people off at the shelter on the side of the road or here, wherever. There's a new bill, A815 Code Blue, where if the temperature is 32 degrees or lower, without, with precipitation, or 25 degrees lower with...
Without.
Yeah, that they have to, I guess, police departments in every town have to go and bring the vulnerable to the shelter. Now, that also includes, from when I had a talk with the county administrator, has to do with also, you know, heaven forbid, someone has no heat that night, or their pipes break or something like that, they qualify too. So hopefully, you know, I know you're all, we're going to see you on, I guess, Monday at the Quarterly, so, you know, you're very active with that. So hopefully, we won't have any problems this winter because it will get cold. And then, of course, anybody who wants, of course, you know, they have Thanksgiving over at Christ Church and then over at...
I'll be there.
Housing Health and Need Service. Are you going to serve again?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm just gonna say happy...
Left-handed, though.
Yes, just say happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Paul.
Chris Coley, Prospect Ave. I noticed that you have the small business event. I brought this up a couple of years ago, and I bring it up each year. Maybe we can do like other towns, put a plastic bag over the meters and tell the shoppers on Saturday that the parking in this town is free. Please come and shop, don't go to the mall, but still haven't done the back. Now, they're asking for parking permits. Why is Hackensack one of the few towns that charges residents to get a permit for $5 to let people, let the cops know that we're residents and we're parking on our own street? We can't give, we can't give that to a resident with the taxes we pay for free. Now, in regards to the PAC, I understand the PAC is a great thing. The people that use the event or use the building should pay or defer the cost of employees used and utilities that are used at that building. Now, as a taxpayer and a resident of Hackensack, we already paid $8 million for that building. Now, I'm sorry if the person that uses the building can't afford the use of the building, but if they can find me another event place that doesn't charge for the person to use that event, I will shut up right now. But there is none. And I think $8 million that the taxpayers have to have paid in the increase in their taxes, I feel bad for the person using the building has to pay a fee because I'm paying that fee every time I get a tax bill. But otherwise than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you, Chris. And it was three, three million, not eighty. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Anger. I'm just curious about one thing, several things. Number one is, why did we get a tax acceleration for lien without notification? And why were we being charged $25 just for mailing and 2% for the first 1,500? I don't seem to understand that. And the other thing is, you've got this tax acceleration, but why are we spending so much money that we don't have? And at the same time, there's so much construction going on around Hackensack since the town became so diversified that we're not getting permits for none of that. And I'm sure, Mr. Anger, you got a letter from me, am I correct? A letter, did you get a letter from me? I sent you a certified letter.
My office got it, yes.
Okay, your office got it. See, that's why I sent it in writing because, see, it get put away in File 13 and nobody knew anything about it. But I just don't understand, everything is passed on to me as a small taxpayer, and you say we'll come out. In my age, I had, if I live another five years with taxes, because I'm gonna, somewhere I'm not gonna be, gonna have to miss a meal. But I just don't know, where is the money coming from? You're speculating, isn't, what's happening? Can you tell me?
You want to continue till your three minutes was up?
No, I just wanted, I'd like to get an answer if I can, but I'm just curious, what was happening with the money? Where's it coming from?
The key thing I heard from you was all these buildings going up, and that these buildings going up are what's going to produce a lot of the revenue that this city is going to need to lower taxes.
When?
We can't, until the buildings are built, the apartments are rented, that's when we get the money from the pilot program. So that's, that's why it's important to move all this forward and get them up. And it's not an easy process, and it takes time, progress takes time. And, you know, the old saying, Rome wasn't built in a day, either is Hackensack, it's gonna take some time. And we're looking at, before it's all, projects are all done, we're looking at 2024.
Yeah, but why did you?
Before everything's done.
Why did you move the tax acceleration thing?
I defer to the city manager on that.
The reason why the city has an accelerated tax rate is that when you have people pay taxes quarterly, the city operates, Board of Education, we write a check every month, too. We have expenses just like you do as a homeowner. By waiting the whole quarter, we could run short because I have to make these payments every month. So by accelerated tax rate, we're getting our money and we're paying our bills... we're getting our money, and we're paying our bills on time. And without that, we'd have to borrow, or we'd come up short. Because unfortunately, this budget's a hundred and two million dollars, even though, are you just gonna talk? Okay, let me finish. Unfortunately, the city has to pay these bills, and we have to pay them timely. So the only way for us to pay our bills? Because when people tax appeal, and we're short? We're short. We always make everybody else whole. The city comes up short, and somebody contests a debt. Let's say that the budget's approved at a hundred and four million dollars. Once they put this together, if somebody contests those taxes, I still have to cover this. So the only way for the city to make sure that we have a good cash flow and stay current is have accelerated tax rate, because otherwise, we can't pay our bills timely.
Okay, so then one other thing, as I walk away, I come to pay my taxes, and I can't find a place to park. The guy you got down there said, "Well, you can't park it." Every sign says Employee Pocket. I'm the person paying the employees. I can't even park, I get a ticket.
I believe there's at least six or seven fifteen-minute parking spots down there.
You're standing in line to pay your taxes. You even need more than fifteen minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Next place.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. I was expecting to see a resolution for the settlement with Debbie Heck. Apparently, somebody is still having their little hissy fit because of a personal vendetta, which is costing us legal fees, which this would have been settled a while ago for five hundred instead of the seven whatever. But more legal fees, more of a settlement. But you know what I found? This is what's real, this is like wonder, this is like gold, gold. Hackensack citizen, you're going to lower our legal fees. This is four years ago, these are the promises you made. You were complaining about a seventy-six million dollar budget then, now it's over a hundred, okay? And I'll put it on record again, the accelerated tax sale is despicable, despicable. You need our money. You didn't need it before, you're spending more of our money. That's why you had to do it. It was seventy-six mil... It's in here, in your propaganda from four years ago, you're complaining about a seventy-six million dollar budget, and now it's over a hundred. That's why, you're spending more of our money. And if anybody up there is good with numbers, maybe you could tell us how much we've spent on legal fees since you've been on your watch? How much we've spent on settlements on your watch, okay? Because you also promised in here, and these were promises, we vow, we will, we will. Our goal is to create an open and honest government that is accountable to the people of this city. Not, not happening. How could you set, how could you do this to the small theater groups? How could you do that? No notice, just like you were going to get rid of sanitation. No notice, just like, all of a sudden, the M&amp;M Building, the parking lot is shut down. No notice, what a waste of time with the decals on that. I'm talking fast, because I got a lot to say, and I only have three minutes, okay? Oh, transparency? You're as transparent as mud. You don't know what transparency is. Go look it up, go look it up. Because with the officers' hearings, Mrs. Canestrino, all this is you. This is you, your quotes, okay? You fought to have officers' hearings open a few years ago. You attended officers' hearings. Now you want them closed, the city wanted them closed, okay? You want to keep us uninformed by not having the full agenda. You want to keep, don't want to hear what we have to say by only having three minutes. But you are going to do all these wonderful things you promised, and you haven't done any of it. You were going to have ward leaders. You were going to have, let's see, a public safety committee, communication between residences and city government. You don't want to hear from us. That's why you shortened the time. You complained about seventy-six million dollars. You complained about the debt service back four years ago. What is it now? It's more than it was four years ago. You sold us a bill of goods. You sold us a bill of goods.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up, thank you. Next place.
Okay, good evening, Kathleen Salvo, forty-seven Lode Street, Hackensack. Continuing on that trend of thought with transparency, because I don't think you guys know the definition of transparency. Last Monday, November thirteenth, a sign appeared in an M&amp;M lot. Please note, this lot will be closed in big letters on or about November fifteenth. Plan ahead. You asked us to plan ahead. What kind of transparency is this? How could we plan ahead? Today, I had three people going up the one-way street, one person almost getting killed, a funeral that only had a couple of people in it, and everybody parking in driveways where it says, "No parking here at the corner", and no courtesy to the Board of Ed, no courtesy to the school, no courtesy to the church, that's gonna be a hundred years, and it's gonna be closing, and it will close, because there's no parking, no courtesy to the residents. Just, we're gonna close, and screw you, you're gonna have a problem, it's your problem. And I commend the Board of Ed, Head of Board of Ed, Ms. Marks, and our John Jar, who were out there freezing along with Franco and painting, trying to paint lines, giving us twenty-four parking spaces where we lost seventy-four, having people back up and having nothing. Are you gonna get an award for this, Mr. Sims? Are you gonna get an award for this building? For how you messed up everything? We should give you a big award. You can't even, you shouldn't even go to church. A church that's been there a hundred years and now can't park? The only twenty-four parking spaces for this entire neighborhood that were short already, and over a year, talk to the man, it's gonna be over a year. Ten of our beautiful trees just taken down, and you worried about hypocrites? About putting trees in Atlantic Street Park? And taking away from, this is the only greenery? And about our kids, I love when you say "our kids", these are our kids. That school was promised that little piece of green, and the Board of Ed would pay the liability, and all any preschool has outside play. These kids, these are our kids, our kids. Not kids that are coming for a tournament, not the PAC that you did with the PAC, you told it was for the people, and you give it to Upper Main Street Alliance. This has the same parallel. Eight point two million dollars, not for our kids, for tournament kids from out of town. Same thing you did with the PAC. These people were dedicated. They publicized the PAC, we wanted to have culture. And all of a sudden, the Upper Main Street Alliance take... You should meet the Mayor Council for Upper Main Street Alliance, because you were doing nothing for the people. And I don't know how you can sleep at night. How the two of you could be on the planning board, listen to all the concerns of everybody out there? Everything was wrong, a hundred percent lay on courage. They told you all the things that were wrong. None, no transparency, a meeting with three people, he being one of them, when you're supposed to meet with the town, and the planning board said to you, "We recommend that you listen to the people, and the people said, 'Do not put it there for X amount of reasons.'" Then this propaganda piece that, "Oh, we didn't put it there, because it's gonna cost more money." How do we know it's gonna cost more money if we put it in John's book? You didn't have a meeting to tell us about it. It wasn't even on the agenda, it was hidden. You didn't have the meeting with the group. And this is all propaganda, this is all fiction. Serious and safety issues in the neighborhood? These are serious and safety issues. So if you people can sleep at night knowing what you did to our neighborhood, that I don't know how I'm gonna fix it, we're out there freezing, and we're gonna park on your street, Mr. Mayor? And I suggest to go to school to be on the planning board.
Thank you, Ms. Salvo.
You're supposed to go to school to be on that.
Thank you, Mr. Simms.
Next place. Hello, Ms. De Pasca, how are you?
Good, deep on second. Not for the dog pardon, this time. I just have a question. Is there being any investigation on the Airbnbs that are going on in Hackensack?
On the...
Airbnb, they're like, people that are renting rooms to people for...
It's a website, yeah. I mean, Airbnb is a website that you can go on where if you want, instead of using a hotel room to rent an extra apartment, you actually physically are able to...
Are you aware of any of these happening?
Yeah, right, by my daughter's house.
Can you get us an address, so we can look into it, and we'll find out the legality of it?
You know what, in this day and age, it's scary when you see somebody there. Excuse me?
I don't disagree with that, I'm not crazy about the sound of it.
I think the ordinance was, if I'm correct, that you could rent two rooms in your house or have two people there?
This issue just came up recently, and I just had a conversation. We have a subcommittee ordinance review, and there is nothing on the books to basically cover this for us. So one of the things that I've obviously thought of is that the city needs to be prepared for this, because we have no idea who these people are, what we're entertaining. I mean, you start to go down the thought process of homeland security, you have to wonder, is this approved?
I'm sure these people aren't getting background checks, right?
I'm sure that this isn't completely a prudent, well-thought-out plan. So we're gonna go back, and we're gonna look at these, and obviously, we're in contact with the police department, because I think we need to make full disclosure and figure this out. Because obviously, this is a whole new arena. You know, it's almost like when you had licensed taxi cab drivers, and then now you have Uber drivers that come in, you know, you rely on Uber to do that, not your city that used to provide that. So I think that these steps have to be maintained.
Because I babysit one day a week at my daughter's house, and it really, it makes you very nervous.
I mean, I will add, just because I've dealt with these issues. I mean, municipalities are struggling with exactly how to balance out the right of people to, you know, use their home, you know, if they wanna, you know, have transient guests in their home versus the need for, you know, the neighborhood to feel comfortable that you're not just essentially creating short-term hotels in residential neighborhoods. It is something that's on the mind of a lot of municipal attorneys as to how to strike that balance appropriately.
Like, if we know of a house, do we pull it in, or like...
I mean, we could probably go online and find it. You could probably go on Airbnb and put in the zip code and see what comes up.
That's what I did, to confirm it, the picture of the house and everything. And I don't think the woman lives there either. So that could be, I don't know.
So any concern that you have, just bring it to the city manager's office, call address.
Okay, thank you.
Anytime, ma'am.
Anybody else from the public saying not, motion to close? Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Okay. Mr. Von Rudenberg?
Good evening. I just want to start off by thanking Constable Mattalian and the many H-Cops that took part in the Clinton Street Halloween event. It was very seamless. They did a great job patrolling and making sure everyone stayed safe and everything was running smoothly. Also, I want to thank sanitation, they did a great job cleaning up afterwards. You couldn't even tell there were thousands of people up and down Clinton in two hours, so, but it was a really good time. To Mr. Galach regarding the parking? Hi, I agree with you. This is a, you know, Hackensack is a unique place, there's a lot of people coming and going, there's a lot of doctor's offices, so to have a dedicated spot for a resident is very important. So I would, you know, I would definitely try looking into that for you and see what we could do. Also, thank you to Officer, Police Officer Tina Capadonna. She visited the ECDC during their Halloween celebration with two other officers, and they're giving out goodie bags, and it was just nice to see the police down at the school with the kids, and it wound up being a really great time. To Miss De Pasco, I think I encountered that very same crossing guard you did. I almost ran her over. But yes, I agree on a green arrow during rush hour right by the hospital. You cannot cross people with a green arrow. It's just, it's a disaster waiting to happen, so I definitely would look into that. Thank you to the Hackensack Fire Department. There was an alarm went off at my parents' house, and I have to say, they got there quickly. Firefighter Oates, Sigonzza, and Diemore, they were great. We couldn't figure out how to turn the, reset the fire alarm, and they were, you know, they didn't feel safe leaving until they knew we could, you know, it was okay, because the alarm kept going off, they did a really great job. In regards to Access For All, to Paul, I was actually back and forth with someone from the committee. We've been sending emails back and forth, so we're trying to work on that and see what we could do. And thank you to the Crime Stoppers who were on Clinton for Halloween. They did a great job, they raised a lot of money. They were, you know, very involved out there. It was a very good turnout. And the Small Business Saturday, great idea. Thank you for coming out, to the gentleman that just opened the Farmers Insurance, congratulations. And we're always welcoming new business. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Just a couple of things worth noting, I think, on tonight's agenda. One, you know, as far as continued redevelopment in our downtown, there was a resolution on about a redevelopment designation for a building on Sussex Street. For those of you that might remember this, this is the old Social Security building that's, you know, long overdue for an overhaul. And I think this is definitely a wonderful step in the right direction. And again, another step of moving forward, having our downtown be part of its renaissance or its rebirth. Another thing I think worth noting, and just so people are prepared, that come to our Committee of the Whole meetings, another one of the resolutions, actually, it was on the consent agenda, was that our Committee of the Whole meetings are now gonna, in January, will be starting at six o'clock instead of six thirty. We'll continue to remind folks, we feel that we just do need a little bit more time, and we do try to meet in between the two meetings to discuss things that happened at the Committee of the Whole. So hopefully, you know, this will give us the opportunity to have better discussions before we move into the council meeting as well. So in January, those Committee of the Whole meetings will be starting at six o'clock. Next thing, you know, there was, and I appreciate folks taking the time to come out tonight, theater groups, et cetera, and speak to us about issues that they feel that they're experiencing. First of all, I want to just say, you know, the opening of Hack Pack was a huge success. It was, you know, a fabulous evening. There was, you know, such a wonderful buzz. People were so excited to be there, and so excited to be part of and see where Hackensack, or the direction that Hackensack is moving. Cassian, I agree with you, we have to start doing a better job on marketing these events. And actually, that night, there was, people were clamoring for more information. And, you know, we could talk about Hamilton's, because we knew about it. And I think there were a number of people there that said, "I'm going right home to hackpack.org, and I'm coming to see that." And, you know, we've been pushing Greg, and he's getting that schedule together, and of course, getting it out on hackpack.org, and doing a better marketing job as a city on all of these events. And that kind of leads into, you know, the other part of this when we're talking about fees. You know, again, some other residents brought this up, and we do have a responsibility to our residents, of course, funding a lot of these different types of things. We are using city taxpayer money to do some of this. And we're not expecting to see a huge return on investment, but we're looking to try and have a goal of being somewhat self-sustaining, especially with this new facility. And we did do our homework. We did go out and look at other venues and see what they were charging. And the fee we came up with, which is two hundred and fifty dollars a night, was less than the other venues that we polled that were similar in size. I think the closest one to us was Fairlawn, which I believe is four hundred dollars a night. So we tried to come up with something that we felt was a reasonable number. I mean, I know, you know, hey, you know, if I'm having a small graduation party or a children's party, and I'm renting an Elks Club or something for that, I'm easily gonna pay that amount just for a small venue like that for an evening. You know, and we're talking about a state-of-the-art facility. And I do think, and I guess we are asking you to believe in us, we do believe in you, and we do want you to continue to perform, and we're asking you to believe in us, in that we're hoping that the attendance at your theater productions is going to greatly increase, not only by the size of the venue, but by the adrenaline that's now being generated, that this is central to the downtown, that we're gonna start to see some of these really successful events. New folks that never came into Hackensack to attend an event are gonna be asking, "Hey, what else do you have? What else can I do?" And we're gonna do our darndest to promote and to get as many of those people in for your benefit as well. For you to have new folks hearing and seeing and watching your productions. Because that's really, I'm sure, that's what we want, and I'm sure that's what you want as well. So, you know, I do agree, we have to work together, and communication maybe could be a little bit better, and we'll work on that. We're not perfect, we'll work on that. But we do want you, we do value you, we do know how important it is to have the arts and successful downtown. And I look forward to us limping through this first year, because it's a learning experience for all of us. You know, whenever you have change, even when it's changed for the good, it can be difficult. And, you know, we're gonna get there. And, you know, we're gonna get there. Let's, let's work together and, and hope that we can get there. Uh, one correction that I, that I need to make, no money was given to the Main Street Alliance. That's absolutely, believe me, I'm very involved in the budgetary process. I attended all these meetings. No money at all from the city was given to the Main Street Alliance. That is absolutely, one hundred percent not true. In fact, the Main Street Alliance has supported this initiative and spent much of its own money in support of this organization. In addition to holding a fundraiser for Hack Pack, which raised approximately four hundred thousand dollars for, for the Performing Arts Center. So I want to be very, very clear. The city has funded the marquee events, but is getting, not through the Alliance, through itself, but is getting the return on that investment. We had opening night and, and the matinee. We had a sold-out opening night. We had a good audience on the Sunday as well, as well as receiving some sponsorship. So we're learning, you know, and some of these events, there's only five of them, I think, planned, you know, and maybe eventually we'll, we'll do six a year, we don't know. We're learning together. And this is, is something that we feel we need to do, again, to bring more people into the city and to let them understand what we really have here. And it's really a gem, it really is. Um, next thing, Cassine, I was thinking you might be back because last time we had an interesting conversation about taxes. So I went and I did a little bit of homework so that I could, because last time we were both talking about, you know, what is it and where are we and, and how do we compare things? So what I did is, I, I broke down some numbers based on tax levy increase. And not to bore everybody to death with numbers, but it was an interesting conversation we had. And basically, the tax levy is the amount of money that we have to raise from taxes to support our schools, to support our city and to support a small portion of the county. So that increase each year is what basically results in the changes of the delta in your taxes. So this year, for example, two thousand seventeen, if I can get my cameraman for TV Lances zero in on this, I just printed this before I came out. The tax levy increase this year was, was five point two, et cetera, million dollars for the city. Of that five point two, the little blue line, actually, the county saw a little reduction. So the county actually decreased by thirty-two thousand dollars, which we appreciate that as far as their contribution. The city's contribution to that increase was about one point four million dollars. And the, the school's contribution to that was about three point nine million dollars. So if you take those numbers, just look at percentages because it's easier. The tax increase, the tax levy increase, about seventy-four percent of it came from the schools this year, twenty-seven percent from the city, and actually a negative one percent, which helped us out a little bit as far as the county goes. Now, I'm not being critical. Residents approved the school budget, you know, our city budget, a lot of discussion and presentation. But, but, but these are the numbers. This is what it is. So when, we need to understand and, and folks, you, you know, we talk about transparency. We wanna just understand, hey, this is what happens. Someone brought up why, why, where are these increases coming from? This is what's happening in the city. And these are things that have publicized, school budgets have been voted on. You know, city budget is well-discussed here. So, so this in a nutshell, Cassine, is, is pretty much where it all comes from. Uh, a couple of the quick things, I think Sissy mentioned it. The senior Thanksgiving lunch was another huge success, thanks to everyone involved. Thanks to the school kids that do the cooking. I mean, they do a phenomenal job. Thanks to the, the schools for providing that opportunity for them. Not only do they cook, they serve, they're, they're so amenable to everyone. My mom is there and she's ninety-nine and, you know, the children come over and talk to her and, and help her, uh, you know, have her meal brought to her. And it's just a really, really nice event where we have a lot of seniors and we have a lot of young folks and bringing them together like that, I think, is a great thing. Uh, tree lighting, December fourth, I think the city manager mentioned. Put on your list, folks, because it's before our next council meeting, so we don't have opportunity to remind you. That's always a great event out on the green. Um, I think that's it. Happy Thanksgiving. Oh, no, wait, wait, one more thing, one more thing quick. I always talk about the FAA in my meetings with TANAC. You know, we've made a lot of progress there with coming up with an alternate flight path. Just so folks know, um, I asked for and TANAC was willing to do, uh, a supplemental meeting prior to January. It's going to be next week, it's a closed meeting, it's only for TANAC members, but I will be attending and representing the city, hoping to expedite moving the FAA forward with this alternate flight path. So things are going in a nice direction there. Again, when I have more information from that meeting, I'll be happy to share it with all of you. Now I'll say, "Happy Thanksgiving." We have so much to be thankful for in the city. So, you know, again, let's be kind to one another and, and appreciate what we have here in a fine city. Thank you.
David?
I wanna say kudos to the grand opening of Hack Pack, wonderful event. Registration for Hack Attack Junior Basketball and Wrestling will take place, will end in two weeks. Registration is now being taken at thirty-nine Broadway, the old Cultural Arts Building, and they're open from eight to five. This past Saturday, Hack Attack Junior Basketball, along with Burn County Delta and Burn County Cues in Carver Park, we gave out a hundred and ninety-two turkeys. It was a great day. We have a new health club opening up tomorrow, Barnes Theory Fitness. It's next door to Home Depot on Hackensack Avenue. We'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow at five thirty, um, stop by. A holiday tree lighting will take place Monday, December fourth at five thirty. Come take a picture with Santa and Frosty the Snowman. As the city manager said, tickets go on sale tomorrow for a senior citizen bus trip to Hunter Hill Playhouse. Um, it's a great event. This Thursday is the eighty-sixth annual Hackensack versus T-Nec football rivalry. The game takes place at ten thirty. This year is in T-Nec. Hackensack has won the last four years. I believe, Blue and Gold, let's go, come. I wanna thank everybody and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving tonight.
You, Leo?
Well, my, my friend here, they say, "All the wonderful things that we got right now in the city." And I'm sorry because I was a couple of minutes late, but, uh, a dear friend lost the fight against cancer and I was there. And tomorrow I will be back to take it to the cemetery. That's really bad, bad day for me. The only thing that I can tell you is, please go for your regular checkups. Don't wait to the last minute, please. Thank you for coming and have a, a good Thanksgiving, okay?
Thank you, Leo. Um, Hack Pack's the big subject, but it was, it was a great, uh, opening night. Sold out, had a lot of fun, um, great crowd, performances were great. Um, couldn't ask for a better night, except, I don't know if some of you are aware of it, I was sitting in row H. And all of a sudden, I'm on the aisle and people next to me are going, "Where's row I?"
Me.
Well, row I should be behind me. So I looked behind me and it says row J. So we were missing a row. But thankfully, we, you know, we didn't oversell the tickets. We had, uh, the back row was empty, so we were able to shift people around. But it was, that's where the joke about the, the I came in. But we did let the planner have a little ribbing on that one and rightfully so. Um, it was a great show, I, I agree with, uh, what the deputy mayor said, Cassine, about more communication. I, I do like the fact it's on, I saw Hamilton's on the website today, actually, it was on there. And I plan on getting my tickets, uh, and you're, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you hear it's selling well. I, I'll definitely go on and get them tomorrow. Um, I had mentioned at night, uh, and I also went Sunday too and had a good crowd there on Sunday. It was a very, very good show. And we were a little shorthanded, one of the staff members didn't show up. And ended up, uh, being the usher for the first forty minutes. Nobody knew I was the mayor, it was kinda fun. And then when I got up to introduce the theater, we were like, "Oh, the guy just sat us." So that was, that was pretty fun. But, uh, that, that park and, uh, the Hack Pack itself just received an award several weeks ago, Ted mentioned, from the American Planners Association of New Jersey, as the best great place in, in the state of New Jersey, uh, for public places. So that was, uh, and we had a score of a hundred percent. So we're doing something right there. It was, it was a, a great honor to receive that. I wanna give kudos to Dave and Hack Attack Basketball and the Fraternal, was it fraternity or sorority?
Both.
Both? For, uh, getting these turkeys and getting them out to people who need them. Um, it's a special feeling and I know that feeling when you can do something for others, um, that might, might be, uh, you know, a little down and out or a little less fortunate and it's good to be able to help people like that. Um, the cost of moving to Johnson Park, there was a definite cost just to do the study to move to Johnson Park and it was a considerable cost. I don't know the number, but you know it off the top of your head?
I don't have the exact figure, but it was expensive.
It was considerable. And we were told by the planning board not to move it, but to look into other possibilities of moving it. Anyway, uh, we did look into it. If we moved the building to Johnson Park, we could have put it there, but being green acres, wouldn't be able to do the children's after-school program nor would be able to do the senior stuff. Plus, the building, based on the type of construction necessary for that area, would have been equal to or the same size as the building we have right now. So it made absolutely no sense for the taxpayers. Did Mrs. South, why are you so disrespectful? Please, don't make me remove you from this meeting. I do not talk when you're speaking. Please give me the respect I give you. Please give me the respect I give you, thank you. Ms. Von Rudenborg? Clinton Place, you brought it back to life all by yourself this year. And I'm only kidding because the, the houses on Clinton Place do a great job. But Stephanie bought a house on Clinton and, uh, they have, uh, started with the decorations big time over there. It looked great. And, uh, thanks for doing that and the city thanks you and I'm sure the neighbors thank you and all the people that visited. Uh, thousands of people from all over North Jersey go to Clinton Place to see those decorations on, uh, Halloween. Um, I'm not gonna get into the comments made on the Hack Pack as far as pricing and everything else. Mrs. Canestrino spoke to that. Uh, but I will defend the Main Street Alliance. The Main Street Alliance did not receive any taxpayer money, as was mentioned. But not only that, without the Main Street Alliance, that opening didn't happen this week. Didn't happen. And what's their involvement? These are business owners in the city of Hackensack that have a huge investment in this city right now. And it made sense for them to throw their efforts into, their vision is exactly what you want. And to see them get beat up like that is, is just unfair to me and I'm gonna take their back on this one. They've got your back, believe it or not. They wanna see this thing be successful, they wanna see everything in there. We're talking about, I gotta tell you something. And I attended these meetings, I was on the booking committee. We caught heck, we spent three million dollars on a building and caught hell from the local theater groups for booking five nights in one year for a three-million-dollar building. I think that's kind of unfair, guys. I don't think that's a lot to ask after we spent three million dollars in a theater to book five nights for, uh, a Pack the House series, so. And the Main Street Alliance should be congratulated for what they've done to contribute to do this. And should they have a say in some of the stuff? Absolutely, they're business owners in town, they have a lot to say in it. They want the town to be successful. Um, they paid for the branding, they paid for the website, they paid for so much that we would have had without them. Um, and it was a tough month, coming down the last month between Mrs. Canestrino and squeezing this guy for money. It's amazing that they got open, but we got it done. Um, the senior lunch, it was an awesome success. Um, it's one of my favorite things to go to, seeing, seeing all those folks and, uh, they love seeing us there. Uh, Mr. Cow from the high school and his kids do a great job, the food is fantastic. Um, bus trip was mentioned, we're talking about doing another bus trip every year. We can squeeze that into the budget for the seniors. Um, so that, that would be a, a plus because I think it sells out pretty quick. Um, there were other green spaces in the first ward, not just this. And I agree with you, Kathy, you hate to take green space away, but that sometimes you have to balance out and weigh where the importance is needed. This building will serve a much better purpose being, uh, built the way it is, the new size and everything else. And you, we have Pulaski Park and Columbus Park within two to three blocks down there, reasonably close. Um, the building itself, you know, I've been accused that, you know, when kids catch fire and die, it's gonna be your fault, Mayor, I've actually been, said that to me. There's no sprinklers in the building that's there now. The new building will be state-of-the-art safety, sprinklers throughout, Siamese connections for the fire department on both ends, unlike it is now. The fire trucks can get there, the fire department has approved it. The fire department would never, it's a class one fire department, number two in the state of New Jersey, one of only sixty in this country. They would never approve a building that wasn't safe. Not gonna happen, not going to happen. Um, again, Mr. Glover, I thank you for your efforts. Um, looking forward to, uh, attending some of your shows as well. And Ed is still here? We're gonna do everything we can to help you. Um, we'll look at what other towns have as far as their ordinances. I don't, uh, disagree with you at all on that. I just think there might be some complications in how it gets done and there might be some, uh, changing pains when we go to do it. But I think it's a good possibility, so we'll do everything we can to help you there. Um, and the other thing, there's, somebody mentioned that the town was unsafe down by the Hack Pack, but I, I feel it's never been safer now than it is. It was an old decrepit parking lot, now it's a park that's well-lit at night. The building is, uh, you know, safely secured. There's a new apartment building there with security cameras and everything else in the area, so I feel very safe down there. Uh, Larry Eisen, I agree with you on the email list, that's probably a good idea. And Chris Coley, it was only three million, not eight million. Big difference. It wasn't even close to eight million. So, and I don't disagree with you on the five-dollar resident ticket, so. With that, I wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, everybody enjoy your, hopefully you're getting, some of you's getting a long weekend. I know I'm not, but I hope some of you are. And I gotta work Friday, unfortunately. But, uh, City Hall's closed though.
Yes, sir.
I tell you, it's rough being the mayor. But anyway, everybody have a safe trip home and, again, have a great Thanksgiving. Motion to close, please. All right?